Good evening. It is August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, and I call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. Councilman Price, can you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate.
A public comment. I have two cards at the moment. Nathan Sparks. Approach the microphone, introduce yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mayor and Council on Nathan Sparks. I'm here actually representing the Dunwoody Sustainability Committee because in our meeting this past week, we recognized that there is a budget ongoing and we've believed that there is a opportunity to fund the Chattahoochee River Keeper Organization, one of our sustainability heroes, one of our heroes individuals is here in person as well. This organization reviews weekly samples collected by volunteers out of eleven streams that flow into the Chattahoochee River. Recently, we saw where the whole Chattahoochee was shut down due to contamination. And in Dunwoody, we have two or three sections of impaired waterways. And the staff goes through the process to review those through regulatory requirements. However, with the riverkeepers, we're in a proactive stance in this effort, not a reactive one. And I want to read to you a little bit of detail. I've sent an email to you on Friday with information about the riverkeeper and the fourteen thousand dollars we'd like for you to allocate to them annually. So that the fifty thousand or so residents of Dunwoody have their water sampled every week. It's very economical because it's very volunteer volunteer oriented. We collect the samples, we bring it down there, volunteers like my daughter, test samples on Thursdays. And Mike Meyer, the director, goes out into the field with other experienced people to find and fix sewer leaks. In the impaired waterway of Nancy Creek, he says, sent an email and I've sent it to to Councilman Second to and asked him to forward it along. Let me just tell you what he writes here. Intermittent problems indicated in the neighborhood water watch program that we do each week identified the Tilly Mills site. And the third field team went out to determine any potential ongoing upstream sources. It was intermittent, hard to find, right? Extensive tracking conducted by our team over several days and stream reaches covering miles of tributaries and potential sources assessed through our testing and inspections led us to a reach near the intersection of Winters Chapel Road. Where an ongoing sewer spill caused by an overflowing manhole clogged by fats, oils, greases, and so-called flushables, things that we tell our citizens, don't put down the drain. What was going on ongoing clog? On May eighteenth, DeKalb County watershed responded to the riverkeeper's call for action. They worked together with the adjacent apartment complex to get the issues resolved and clearing the line. And the overflowing pipes.
Thank you, Mr. Sparks.
So thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Larry Hyman. You'll have introduce yourself, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, hi, my name's Larry Hyman. Been a Dunwoody resident for nine years. Thank you for everything you do. And I've been on the Sustainability Committee since late April. So I'm here today to ask the city council to and strongly recommend that the city council take action on several of the items in the Dunwoody Sustainability Plan that was passed adopted in twenty twenty-one. I believe you all had a chance to review the letter that the Sustainability Committee submitted. We're asking that specifically with effect with respect to energy efficiency of city buildings, having a contractor come in, do some energy audits, identify ways to perhaps reduce electricity, natural gas use. We believe that's going to be a win-win, both to save money, save taxpayers money on natural gas, electricity bills and whatnot. As well as reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions that come from burning natural gas and indirectly from using electricity. We also hope that the city will support renewable energy, as is in the Sustainability Plan. Particularly with respect to perhaps putting solar panels on some of the city buildings where doing so would be feasible and tech, you know, technically not cause any problems. Again, we believe that those can oftentimes pay for themselves in in relatively reasonably short return on investment periods. So again, could be another win-win for the city. Could be good for the reputation of the city as well. This is a, you know, global warming is of people feel strongly about it. And so two years have passed since this Sustainability Plan was adopted. So I think with, you know, COVID made things difficult, I'm sure, to get things done. But perhaps now is a good time, especially with tax incentives recently enacted by the government, including direct pay for cities. A lot of this is in the letter that I sent you on behalf of the committee that explains how, for example, thirty percent tax credits are available to municipalities now. They weren't up until just one year ago. So this could be a good time to take action and we recommend that the city provide directives to the city administration to take action and at least explore these two issues of energy efficiency and renewable energy. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. For the cards I have, we will have another section of public comment at the end of the meeting, should you like to address us. Now. Chief Grogan, can you join us up here, please? So on behalf of city council, we want to recognize your recent award of Chief of the Year for the state of Georgia. I'm not sure what you thought when you arrived here about fourteen and a half years ago. Is that about right? And what you thought you were walking into. But our community is better because you're here. And because you've been here and you've set really high expectations. And as mayor, and I think I can speak for council, one of the things that I've learned from you is how important education and training are for our police department. And how you've made it a priority, not only to have continual training, but when we look for police officers, how much we stress education. And as a result of your guidance, we actually reimburse educational expenses for members of our police department. And your forty-plus years of experience also has led us to have really strong community policing, which is so important in today's age. And your calmness, which always often helps me at least. Your calm approach to situations and your ability to see a big picture, I think, when sometimes others cannot has kept us very steady and strong in terms of public safety. Recently, I asked a neighboring city mayor how it was that Dunwoody ended up with two eighty-five. Because I'd like to give it back. And and he said, we probably weren't given a choice, that right, that when they drew it, we didn't have a choice. And I know particularly the last two weeks have been really challenging with the interstate, really challenging. And I appreciate the department on a daily basis. I want them to know that we all know how difficult two eighty-five sometimes makes their jobs. And we totally appreciate their their service and your service. And this award was past due, but we're so glad that you received it. And this isn't a surprise, unlike the surprise in Savannah when you got the award and then the surprise in Savannah of who was there to see you get the award. And then last week, when the was it just last week, it all runs together, a week or two ago, when the Police Foundation recognized you again, a surprise. We can clearly keep secrets. And so this was, this is not a surprise. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything.
Sure, I would say that I just want to thank the mayor and the council. You know, certainly the award that I received from the Georgia Chiefs was a surprise and a shock, actually. And the mayor was there. I was very thankful her and the city manager Eric Linton came. And my wife was there, which was unexpected, because she was supposed to be already gone. And several members of the department. So I was very surprised and honored to receive that award. But certainly you can never receive something like that without the support and assistance from other people. You know, I get to lead a great department with a bunch of what I would consider the best police officers in the state of Georgia. And I work for a city which supports their police officers and and supports me as the chief. And I certainly appreciate that as 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 well. The things that the police department do, we could not do without your support. That's verbally you support us. You support us with when you talk to other people and you support us financially through the budget and recent pay increases is an example of that. That helps us recruit and retain the best officers possible. And so for that, I'm very thankful of that. And, you know, when you said something about what was I thinking when I came here, you know, I didn't know what I was getting into, actually. I can remember waking up at two o'clock in the morning going, what have I done? We were trying to, you know, plan out the department and and prepare as we were leading up to the April first date, we went live. And up until that point, it was pretty stressful, but but thankfully, we've had a supportive community. And I always tell the people that I'm, you know, trying to hire that there's three reasons why you need to come to Dunwoody. The first is we have a very supportive community that supports us from has supported us from day one and continue to do that today. And I said, they do that because we haven't we treat the public right with respect. We're not out here doing things we shouldn't do, and that's why we have that support from the community. Second thing is we have the support of the mayor and the council and the city manager. And the third thing is we treat people right inside our organization. We work as a team together and and that's makes it a great place to work. So thank you very much.
So I think we want to take a picture.
Okay.
What everybody and and also we have some officers who can join us too.
Sure.
So I have the monthly report ending August eleventh. For Parks Department, September ninth, we have the grooving on the green. We also have coming up October fourteenth is the grooving on the green finale. And then the twenty-sixth of October coming up, not too far away, is the trunk or treat Halloween event we have there. Also, the holiday lights will be coming up starting December first of this year, running for the entire month of December. And we'll have in there, too, to celebrate the city's fifteenth year. There'll be Dunwoody and a fifteen displayed in there as well for a celebration of that. Also, the staff ordered a contract to seal all the concrete surfaces at the skate park to reduce wear and increase longevity and safety of the surface. And then Peachtree Charter Middle School softball schedule confirmed the use of Brook Run Park baseball fields. The first home game will be tomorrow. And so, you know, that was, as y'all know, that was a big undertaking of the council to try to work that softball into that field. And so we have been successful with that. The Public Works Stormwater Pipe Rehabilitation of Trowbridge Drive, Vanderland Drive, the Quick Build Sidewalk Extension, we'll talk about that in a little bit. And also assigned replacement program is going on within the Dunwoody Club Forest. Some other major projects are the Dunwoody Road Sidewalk has been completed. That was reopened on August seventh. As y'all know, those those projects are more than just a sidewalk project, had a lot of infrastructure in the ground, stormwater facilities and things of that nature. We tried to do that over the summer and it was open the first day that school started. And also the new turn lane of Womack opened and the new signal was operational prior to the start of school as well. We have twenty-two streets have been paved with ten streets remaining for this year for the twenty twenty-three program. And we've also completed one hundred and sixty-five feet of curb and two hundred and twenty-six feet of stormwater pipe near Cotillion Drive as part of the Georgetown Gateway Project. Traffic delays will continue in that area in the vicinity of two eighty-five. I did take a look at that personally earlier today. Traffic was flowing well during that time of day, but it is a it does have some congestion in that area. So be mindful of that. Vermac Road Path Phase One is also underway, as well as the Winters Chapel Trail Phase One. The flashing beacons along for the crosswalk there. Under Community Development, we are working with the Road Safety Action Plan as a new endeavor with the city. Placemaking within economic development. We're having, we're working with the Dunwoody Arts Commission to select public art for the Georgetown Gateway Project. And also with artists for the mural. And when you drive down Shamlee Dunwoody and Womack, you can see the new wall and the spot that's laid within the wall for the mural that will go there. We also have the more play placemaking plan for the perimeter center. Dunwoody Village Corridor using the Ashford Dunwoody Trail as the spine for that. The Dunwoody Village Implementation Plan, the Economic Development Department has crafted a redevelopment implementation plan for Dunwoody Village following the input for that of the joint planning retreat conducted in November of last year. That's an ongoing project. Edge City two point O is ongoing. And our Innovation and Entrepreneurship Program is also underway, working with Sandy Springs on strategies within the within the perimeter area. Communications, we have the Winters Chapel Trail ribbon cutting coming up August twenty-eighth. We also have, as some of y'all have noticed, those which are within the city, they added the best of all banners to Winters Chapel Trail. That's a new initiative. We have the banner program. We've done them in the village and the Winters Chapel area. And in the future, we're going to put some in the Georgetown area as well when that project's completed. It's just a way to have more of a sense of community within Dunwoody. We also promoted their front yard tree program. We've had ninety-eight inquiries so far for the hundred and forty-eight trees during the first month of registration. So very popular program there as well. We had to reschedule the National Night Out for the Police Department due to the weather. Had several events, as y'all know, canceled with the weather. These are what I'm calling spring-like storms are we're having right now throughout the area. But that's for the September fourteenth is when that's scheduled. We also did conduct several distracted driving details on July the twenty-fifth. These are always very interesting to me because there were forty-one citations issued, seventeen hands-free violations. But on the second note of this, which we had a traffic checkpoint on the entrance to Shamlee Dunwoody and two eighty-five, there were forty citations issued and seven arrests for DUI, I was at wanted person drugs and traffic charges. As you read throughout the workload activities within the police department, you will see quite a heavy list of various items the police that deal with on a daily basis. So Mayor, your point earlier about the chief and everything is in his department, they do a very good job. One thing I do want to point out within that report is a, you know, officer responding to a fraud victim. And that's just something we always want people to be very aware of. Somebody calls on the phone and with that with some kind of scheme and and asking them to go buy some gift cards. And unfortunately, sometimes people do that and start doing it before they realize, hey, this isn't quite right. And so that's very unfortunate that people prey on on the elderly and different ones in that area. The financial report is included within this document. There's a link within the document. Any questions on that, Richard? Or can we go ahead? There he is. Thank you. Glad to answer those. It's very thorough report. Also have under the Risk Management Department. We're doing some RFPs for on-call standby sidewalk and small construction project unit pricing. We also have another RFP for parks and right-of-way maintenance. One also for the Dunwoody Veteran Memorial. And then also for the gateway signage, we have an invitation to bid, an invitation to bid for street sweeping and debris removal. So quite a few projects going on within in the city. There are upcoming projects. Municipal Court keeps moving very smoothly through the system. We disposed of six hundred and eighty-two cases and reset thirty-five cases last month. So that department, once again, is operating very efficiently. I'm glad to answer any questions y'all may have, and we have staff members here as well that can answer any details.
Thank you. Do you have any questions, Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Great detail, really is. Let the let the citizens go online and and look at this, please, to see what we're doing every month. Thank you for your report. I just would like to get it's it's nice to hear about the Vanderland Quick Build Sidewalk Extension. And I think it just made social media posts this morning. So it'd be great to just hear a little bit more of the detail of what we're trying to achieve there, what we may be doing and rough timeline potentially if if possible.
Down here.
I thought he was up.
Yeah, I thought he was too.
All right, well, maybe we could get that.
Yeah, we can certainly get y'all more information, but to your point, council member is, you know, that's one of the first our first, you know, quick build project. And just so the public knows, we're trying to do these projects in the public right-of-way that are let's just define the word, you know, quick build, something that we can do in a quicker fashion rather than a full construction project to try to make traffic improvements on the roadways and pedestrian enhancements and different things of that nature. That's just those in general. We can get more information on that specific project.
It's a rebuild. I think part of it is a repair of an existing an extension. Yeah. So. John, sorry.
Thank you for the great report, Eric. There was an issue a month ago, maybe a couple months ago regarding lighting in the back of Brook Run Park. I haven't seen an update on that. If there's any way that staff could give an update, if not today, in the near future, to verify Georgia Power is working on that issue would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, yeah, break. He was an update on that. He's got some new information.
It has been reported to Georgia Power. I wanted Amy Lightcheck. I was just texting my maintenance staff to see if they had done one since. And I was emailing our rep just now to get an update for you. So I'll get it to you soon as I can.
No, I appreciate you see it as a public safety issue. Make sure it's moving forward. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric. Consent agenda, there's only one thing on it, the minutes. It is an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by John.
Again.
Second by Joe. Any further discussion? Correct. Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, we're moving to business items, action items. Item number four is an ordinance to men, chapter twenty-seven, the zoning ordinance of the city of Dunwoody, cut of ordinances to define medical cannabis dispensary uses and create use regulations for such uses. Paul Lindhart.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is the second read for this text amendment. There are no changes compared to the first read. So I'll do a brief summary of what this is. So this would add medical cannabis dispensary, and this is only for this low THC oil that's allowed and only for medical users. Subject to state law, we would allow these dispensaries in our commercial districts. I have those listed here under the first bullet point. We have two different distance requirements that apply. One is the state law requirements. Those are in the second bullet point here. So it's a thousand feet from dedicated users. Designated users. And then there's a second district requirement that we're adding up locally. This is a two-mile distance requirement between medical cannabis dispensaries, and this is to prevent clustering. So we don't end up with multiple of these sort of on on the corner and we can visit that at a later time. So this does not allow for recreational cannabis use. That would be sort of subject to state law changes. And if the state, you know, should the state go for that at some point in the future, we would come back with you all for this as well. So this is only for those medical users at the moment. And then one of the items that we're adding on here is we're having a bullet that prevents consumption on the premises of these facilities. With this, from a timeline standpoint, should you all approve this tonight? We have the Modern Moratorium ongoing through September fourteenth. This is from an administrative standpoint, a relatively complex use because it would have to go through our business licensing standpoint. What have we would do training with the business license staff and the zoning staff to to look at those distance requirements, to make sure that everybody's on the same page about this and have a meeting set up with our code enforcement team as well. So the then September fourteenth, Moratorium works reasonably well sort of with with those trainings. And with this, I'm available for questions, should you have any.
Questions, anybody? John?
Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. I'm understanding what you have in front of us, but I have a question regarding, this is really for standalone medical cannabis dispensaries.
That's correct.
If there's a CVS down the street, are they allowed to you do it as well?
No, currently there's no state law allowing CVS to do it. Under sort of current initiatives at the state side, it looks like the CVS may not be allowed to do it in the future. But this is only for dedicated standalone dispensaries.
All right, I thought the last read of the way I thought I understand it was that we were regulating the standalones, but they were also allowed in other places as well. So basically standalone is the only thing that we have in front of us is the only options to have that then.
Correct. And and until the state changes sort of its opinion on this, this is the only option.
Okay. All right. And based on the maps that I'm seeing, there, there's only a few different locations and you can't have them too close to each other. So in reality, there may be two or three prime commercial areas that this would be allowed and spread around the city.
Correct. Yeah.
Again, I was hoping for more than the three, because I was hoping that we would have the three dedicated or three primary dedicated ones based on what I'm seeing on the maps, as well as every CVS and Walgreens and anybody else who wanted to do it. But I guess like that's not the option based on state law.
Correct. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. That answers my question.
Tom?
Yeah, I have a question question regarding first of all, with the standalones, I mean, honestly, I understand the idea of the clustering, but there's only twelve locations licensed for the entire state of Georgia. So clustering isn't really going to be an issue in my opinion. And that's based on population. So as more people become eligible for prescriptions and get their their cards, that number can grow, but I don't think it's going to grow to the level that clustering. And then when you look at the overlying zoning of the city and where it is and isn't allowed, there's very, very few locations that one could go to begin with. When you put in the thousand-foot requirement on top of the other zoning and there's very, very little areas where this is actually available. So I'm, I mean, I'm not opposed to the two mile. I just personally don't think it's necessary. I do have a question. think it's necessary. I do have a question regarding the kind of building on what John had asked, because I actually was on a call last week with the Georgia Medical Cannabis Commission, and they they mentioned that actually pharmacies, there is something with the legislature now that they're expecting to be approved as early as November. Um, and that would allow a CVS or any pharmacy to dispense that that would be just getting a prescription like any other prescription. It would be a little bit different. I guess would be the level of service or questions that a dispensary would probably go the extra mile on, but one of the things they raised in that question is that the pharmacies would be subject to the the same one thousand foot requirement, which and and that it's, the way it was explained is that the reason why the uh, local municipalities were given the authority to adjust that wasn't to make it bigger, but actually to reduce those sizes because a pharmacy will need to have some sort of variance or the or a local municipality approval to get their license to to actually provide that to their to their customers. So is would that have to be a separate part of the ordinance, or would that be? And and I'm like, I guess my reason is asking is this is as early as November, and I don't want to have a bunch of requests piling into your office from every pharmacy in the city trying to get online with this. Is there a way that we can get ahead of the the ball on this?
I'll go a bit into long form about this. The latest I have heard, and it's still a moving target, is that pharmacies, it looks like they may only allow locally owned pharmacies to go with the cannabis sales. So the latest I've heard is, and but again, it's a moving target still, is that it wouldn't be the CVS, it wouldn't be the Walgreens, it would only be locally owned pharmacies that could do this. So it reduces the number of different locations. That the the second point, we've exempted in in this ordinance, our requirements only apply for these dedicated freestanding dispensaries and specifically exempt pharmacies. So should we sort of in the future happen to have a pharmacy, should some be allowed? But right now they're not, but should they in the future, they're not subject to our additional requirements? And the thinking for us was that these pharmacies are selling opioids right now under prescriptions. And this is probably not worth, you know, this is under the direction of a pharmacist. This is sort of subject to all existing pharmacy requirements. You know, our main concern is not sort of, you know, a dedicated pharmacy with this. So those we would be not, those regulations would not be applicable here. So they would have to meet the state requirements. But we would allow them just like any other pharmacy in the city. So if a pharmacy would want to do, if it would be allowed in the future, they would be allowed to do it in Dunwoody as well.
Okay, because the the person on the call, and they were the the head counsel for the GMCC, was saying that basically unless there is a local ordinance or variance specific, because they're going to need to have a waiver for that thousand foot requirement to apply to get approval to dispense or or provide that at a, I don't know what the proper term is, at a traditional pharmacy. And I I guess I just want to make sure that we are prepared for that and that because once once that hits, I'm sure there will be a lot of pharmacies that will apply for that, and you know, if there's a variance that's required, I want us ready to handle it or when it happens and and not be, you know, playing catch up as well as, you know, addressing that thousand foot, because they said unless there is a specific, they have something specific from municipality, they won't be able to do that.
And it typically so, and we hadn't seen the regulations yet because they're not published yet. But it's like typically, typically it's we can be stricter than the status, but we can't be more liberal. So we would have to see exactly what the mechanism is that we can go through. Typically, we can't waive state requirements with a local ordinance or like with the local variance process. So we will see, we'll we'll review it once it comes out and we will see what it does, and then we may come back with with something for y'all.
That would be a separate part of the code. It wouldn't be part of this. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Just want to echo some of what Tom said there, specifically looking at that two mile limit. I know the planning commission also had an issue with that. I think it's worthwhile tonight to go ahead and approve this just to get something on the books. But I would like us to revisit that distance once we see how this is developing. The people that are going to want this have an actual medical need. They have a specific diagnosis in in law of what it can apply to. So we need to think about this as a medication, right? This is not my back hurts, can I have a joint kind of setup? And so if we have residents that have a need for this medication, I would like there to be at least a spot in the city where we can, you know, find where they can do that. So let's get some regulations in so that we can train up staff, so we have something on the books, and then let's see, you know, is this two mile distance just a little too much? Maybe we'll revisit it a little bit down the road.
So I think we only have, so I looked at the pharmacy stuff, and it, right now it's only independent pharmacies. It's not the chains. We only have one, and I actually think it meets all the state requirements. I don't know if they'll be interested or not, but unless there's something tucked in a corner that I don't know about. But I think that the important thing to remember is that these are cap, there's a number of these are capped, but at what for the state, like thirty or something?
Yeah, right now it's two licenses at five dispensary each. So right now it's ten, but it'll be up to thirty in the near future.
Right, and and they're going to be all over the state. So really, though we've set some requirements, it's unlikely that we would be attracting more than one or two anyway. And so I think we get this regulations done, and we see what happens. So that's my thought. And then it's, like I said, I think we only have one independent pharmacy that, and I think it does meet these requirements. So, all right, any other questions? Move by John.
Second.
Second by uh, Tom. Uh, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mayor, the next item on the agenda is number five, an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning classification and map for zoning conditions, a lot parcel number eighteen, three forty five, zero three, zero one, seven. In consideration of zoning case RZ twenty three dash oh one for forty four seventy Shambly Dunwoody Road from O I Office Institution District zoning classification to OD Office Distribution District.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So to refresh your memory, forty four seventy Shambly Dunwoody Road is the subject of two zoning requests. The first is the rezoning from O I to O dash D. The second is a special land use permit to allow a four story building, and all of this is to accommodate a newly proposed self storage facility. Since the previous meeting, the applicant has submitted three additional documents. One is the updated site plan, and that site plan does now demonstrate compliance with the seven and a half foot transition yard buffer. Otherwise, it's compliant with the rest of the code. Um, the applicant also, at the request of council at the last meeting, has provided a landscape plan to demonstrate what their tree planting will be. And as you can see, along with two eighty five frontage, they are proposing to plant trees. And then lastly, the third item that they have submitted are updated renderings, and so this is now what the proposed building will look like. The changes are essentially adding a gabled roof and changing of the materials and adding more variation along the facade. Overall, staff recommends approval of both requests. We haven't changed any of the conditions beyond adding the current documents that they've just submitted. Otherwise, everything else remains the same from the previous submittal. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you so much.
And you're presenting for both items, right? Okay, questions, anyone? Catherine?
Yep, the first rendering drawing had a very large sign, the name, and now this one, there's no name on it. Is there a signage plan?
So they did not submit a sign plan and we have a new sign code, and so that's what we would go by in terms of the size. I think the signage that was showed on the previous rendering was perhaps a little large for for what we allow. But any signage will go by what our code requires.
Would you expect that it be the similar beyond the building? I'm thinking they want to be visible to two eighty five.
It would be on the building. We we don't allow roof mounted signs, so I'm honestly not sure under our current code how visible the signage would be from two eighty five, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? It's an action item.
Move to approve.
Move by Rob. Second by Joe. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this motion carries unanimously. And you've already presented for the next one, so Sharon, when you're ready, no rush, you just need to read it, but you're no rush, we're okay.
Item number six is an ordinance to amend the city of Dunwoody zoning map for zoning conditions, a lot parcel number eighteen, three forty five, zero three, zero one, seven. In consideration of special land use permit case SLUP twenty three dash oh one for forty four seventy Shambly Dunwoody Road.
Hey, um, any questions, additional questions on this, John?
Uh, thank you. I see that we're still approving the four story, but it looks like three. Do they bury a story? What happened? Where'd it go? Uh, what are we approving?
It is a four story building.
And that's based on the building height? Is that how it works?
So it's four stories. I don't remember the exact height, uh, but it is four stories.
There's a photo in the packet from the back that'll show.
Yeah, it looks like.
Like a basement level.
Topography, I think.
I get, I'm just looking at three. I figured I would ask the question. Thank you. No, no questions.
And just as a reminder, this was an office building, this was the parking lot of an office building that was only accessible through the Georgetown parking lot, the Georgetown Shopping Center parking lot. And G dot bought the office building for future two eighty five managed lane project. I won't say improvement, and and they didn't buy the parking lot. And so the shopping center owner bought the parking lot because they obviously have the access through their property, so this is what they're using it for. All right, any further questions? Seeing none.
Move to approve.
Move by Stacy, second by Rob. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Say no. Uh, that passes unanimously, Sharon. Mr. Walker.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Believe it or not, it's a hundred degrees outside, but we're talking about December events. Uh, the first item I have tonight for y'all is the holiday lights at Brook Run Park. Uh, as y'all know, last year, we we issued a contract to Chipwood Studios for that event, and also wrote into the contract an option for four additional years. As long as he submitted a a proposal to us that was presented to council. So this year he has submitted the design that is in your package. It is for a ski village. Rachel is here tonight to answer any specific questions y'all may have about the design, uh, so put her through the wringer as we talk about. But, uh, we we reviewed the the design. It definitely fits into what we've done in the past. We're pretty excited about seeing it at Brook Run. It is a tremendous event for our community. Uh, and we're excited to to see what he does with it. So with that, I'll open up the questions y'all have.
Is there something on the screen or?
There's not.
Okay, just making sure. Okay. Question, so this is the discussion item, Rob.
What kind of feedback did you get on the display last year?
That was tremendous. We had a lot of good feedback, a lot of repeat families coming out. Uh, it's a great free event. I mean, it's something that the kids get excited about. I bring mine out every year. They enjoy walking through the lights and having a good time, so it's it's always been a very positive event with the community.
I asked just because I thought it was a little underwhelming myself last year, and so um, if if I had a unique view, which is apparently I do, then I'll just keep that to myself, but I pretend that's.
Catherine, did you something?
Yes, I also had the underwhelming, but it was at the end. I went the last day, the second to last day, and you could see lights were out. I think that if we set it up, whatever it is, day one, it should be day last, and I see display maintenance is part of this, and then there's a phone number. I would recommend that we are walking that and calling and getting it fixed so that every light pops every day that we have it. That is my recommendation.
Sure.
John?
First question, maybe regarding an underwhelming aspect, what this lighting goes up, it gets turned on, what happens to the Brook Run lights on the trail? What happens to the other background lighting in the park in that same area? Is it turned off in order to make the holiday lights pop, or is it staying on, underwhelming the other lights that are there?
Yeah, so this will be the first year we've had both, and in the submittal from Chipwood, he proposes putting some decorative shades on the pole lights that are around that area that will accent the display, but also going to help accent the the holiday lights.
Okay, and my real question that I really want to ask is, I'm really looking forward to that Anorandex chair, and do we get to keep that? And can that be put maybe overlooking the baseball field, want the outfield somewhere, or can that? Because I really want that Anorandex chair to be permanent.
We can, we can keep it. That's something that council would like to see. It's a permanent display.
Well, I'd love to see ten of them, a couple over by soccer, a couple by baseball, a couple, I don't know.
With the city with Brandon.
Uh, exactly.
Brandon for pictures.
I I think that's awesome. Other cities, other cities have that, by the way. We're not, we wouldn't be original, but I just like it. So that's me. Other questions? Thank you.
Um, I don't know whether it's Brent or Rachel, but walk me through the snow factory and that it produces actual snow.
So he's got, so Brandon, uh, yeah, thank you, very, a lot shorter than you know. So he's, um, so as you know, with the playground area, the kids, kids go nuts, so he always does something that we know will withstand, you know, thirty days of of kids climbing on it. So um, when he and I spoke about the ski lodge, I said, you know, I'd love to have, you know, fortunately in Georgia, we don't always get our snow. So he said, let me, let me tell what I could do. So he's he's proposing this, what he's calling a snow factory. So it'll have like a fog that looks like, you know, there's chimney and smoke coming out of it. Um, and as the material comes out of the snow factory, it builds this big snow mound, and that's what the kids will play on. So it's like an interactive, it looks like everything's building, and then the final piece is something that's more substantial for kids to.
So how much snow are we getting? Like, are we going to have a snowball fight, or is it like a mound that kids are going to fight over?
That I will ask him about it.
Okay, I'm just, I'm I'm trying to picture like how big this is and like how accessible is for kids. Like, are they in something, or is it just a pile coming out of this on the playground?
Atmosphere.
Fieric, yeah.
And then the mound itself will be next to the snow factory, and that's what they will climb on.
Right, right. So, yeah, so is it just, we need to set expectations with that?
Yeah.
And then, you know, I go multiple nights a week to this thing. I love it, except it rained. I mean, I adore it. But it rained a tremendous amount this past December, like so much so that I was kind of skeptical that we should even try again, but we're going to try again. But we need a maintenance plan, and whether that's we move someone from days to night so that they're checking it and calling it in. I mean, Barrett, my husband brought tools and fixed something last year. Um, well, he got the tools out of his car and fixed something and found that, you know, one other time he found where it was unplugged. So we need, we need a maintenance plan. Again. Okay, yeah.
Um, so part of the contract is Chipwood coming in.
Right.
They do a lot of repairs.
Right.
Unfortunately, with that much traffic and that many children running around, it, they damage a lot of it, and um, one benefit we have going into this year is we have the new light poles that have outlets on the poles at the top of the pole. So we'll be utilizing those for a lot of the the extension cords and have more opportunity to plug things in, so we're not dragging cords kind of all over the place. So we hope to avoid a lot of that issue with things getting unplugged and not operating, so.
I still think that there can be a plan where somebody shows up at five thirty when it's dark and make sure the lights are on, and somebody, Eric, can y'all figure that out, please? Just just to see, because it is a very different experience when a quarter of the lights are off or a half of the lights are off. Um, and one of the great things that I like the most, um, which is is that when the weather's temp, you know, normal Georgia weather, kids are playing on the playground just with the lights of the display, and it's so much fun for them, because when do you And it's so much fun for them, because when do you get to play at a playground in the dark? And so, but when the lights aren't working, that goes away too. So we should figure out a maintenance plan, it's awesome, and then where is the Dunwoody fifteen gonna be, do we know yet?
Yes, that will be sort of, it'll have the the D logo, um, Dunwoody, then the fifteen, as you walking into the entrance between the skate park and the playground, like where we have the truck Thursdays, walk in.
Right, okay, perfect, all right, go ahead.
I do think the glow seesaws are really cool, we were, I don't know, some family discussion, we're talking about playground toys that you don't see anymore, and that would be seesaw, so I'm very. I know, be fun to watch the kids on that.
Sounds good, anybody have any other questions, all right, we'll see this consent, everybody? Just we have confidence that you'll have an answer for us on the snow stuff. Cause if it's atmospheric, I think it needs to be um. Marketed that way, you know, that nobody has expectations of throwing snowballs.
Yep, for sure.
Fun stuff, all right, thank you, we'll see that on consent.
Yep.
Brett, you're still, Mister Walker, you're still here.
Okay, we're switching from cold to hot.
Mm hmm.
Uh, the next item I have for you is uh, a um. Contract award for some shade structures over at uh, the Brook Run Park baseball fields. As y'all know, there's not a whole lot of shade over there while you're watching games, and that's something that's been needed at that facility for a while. And working with Dunwoody Senior Baseball, we've. Uh, located the the best spots to put some shade structures over the bleachers for the spectators. Uh, they're willing to pay half of the cost. Of ninety five thousand, thirty three dollars is the total amount, they're willing to pay forty seven thousand, five hundred sixteen dollars towards the installation of the shades. Um, we reached out to three different vendors, walked them through the site, talked through. What the options were, what we could put up, uh, received three quotes, um, the the best quote we got was from Corcat, which uh, also has a. Uh, they're on a purchasing consortium, so we could have just directly dealt with them, but we wanted to get some competitive pricing, so went and got two other quotes to go along with theirs. Uh, so they came in at the ninety, ninety five. Nine five thousand thirty three dollars uh, for that installation, uh, we hope to, uh, if the contract is approved. At the next council meeting, we'll have the uh, item manufactured and shipped to us in November, and I do the install in November. Um, right at the end of the fall baseball season. With that.
Thank you. Anybody? John.
Uh, thank you, Brent, for the information, I know I had a couple emails back and forth, the packet today didn't have all the information that you sent via email or. Be it based on our conversations, if you could put that in the packet for next week, it'd be greatly appreciated, just so council and the public know what we're actually talking about and spending money on and. Have the details on what we're installing, thank you.
And, oh, go ahead, Joe.
And just from a a perspective, I know the city manager can execute contracts if it's already assigned a budget for under fifty thousand, right? Uh, we know that the Dunwoody Seniors is going in on this, so the total is less. Let's just do a what if, if this was under fifty total, um. I know there's a courtesy of getting up to council, but. Would it have needed to go to council if if?
That's a Ken question, I think, or John Gates.
It's actually a purchasing question a little bit, the threshold that Eric has on spend in contracts is fifty. Um. And he can only bind the current year budget i- if it required amendment, no, but I don't know if there's not an procurement requirement depending upon. That, so I would say, subject to what John Gates said, possibly.
And possibly, to say, we, you know, this one, so Dunwoody, we will execute the contract fully, um, Dunwoody Senior Baseball will make the donation to the city. The arrangement we have through their usage agreement is we carry out all capital improvements, we manage all that, we do the contracts, we purchase the materials. All we carry through, we oversee any, any uh. Capital improvements to the facility, so they're just gonna make a donation, monetary donation to the city in that amount.
And the the, okay, yeah, two more, is there any way of piggybacking on on these guys to do the shade at the new park on uh, um. Free Bridges.
Two Bridges.
Two Bridges, huh, Two Bridges Park.
We're actually getting quotes on that right now, and one of the vendors is Corcat, so we're, we're getting quotes on that also, and that will be a. Eventually more expensive shade project over there, cause it'll be the playground and the splash pad. Uh, so we'll be bringing that to a future council meeting.
Hey, can can I just finish on one thought, just to make sure, cause I don't want to mislead you guys. So without going into law one oh one. I would say this, if the council budgets something. And it fits within Eric's spend, Eric can sign it. If it's a non-budgeted item and has to be added, if it's a contract, it needs to typically be on your minute somewhere and approved as a special line item, so. While Eric has signature authority, it's a limited signature authority, because all contracts with government. Have to be somewhere under record, or at least have been approved in a budgetary process.
And. And last one, just for my, the uh, the um, illustration, the site. The color code in the key, I see blue boxes and I see, I sort of, I, is it where the blue is on the on the?
So the red ones are existing structures, that's the top of the.
The blue one is ones where you're gonna do the install.
Dugouts. The blue area.
Those are covered.
Spectator stands on.
Uh, okay, right, okay, thanks.
Thank you, uh. We will. Put, should we do, since the documents are missing, just make sure they're in the packet, and we can be consent for this as well.
Right, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mister McLeod. Marta bus structures.
Yes.
How many years have we been waiting for this council and Hennigan? A long time.
Uh, the original agreement was signed in two thousand and seven, so before the city even existed.
Mm hmm.
Good evening, um. Finally, we have gotten a contract on July eleventh, it was a little late, uh, because they had extended the last contract to uh, the end of June, so. A little late, um. But when staff read the agreement, uh, we had several concerns, um. The agreement shifts approval to a third party contractor, um. We sat down with uh. Attorney, um, he has the same concerns, um. We presented all these to Marta, they took them back to their legal counsel, and they said, no, this is the way it is, so. Um, I just wanted to go over them with you, uh, again. The third party contractor was an issue. In paragraph two, the replacement of the shelters, uh, we would like to. Decide where those go, or at least have Marta asked us and approve of them, because if we need to move them, it does not say in there who pays for that. The third item on paragraph four, uh, it goes into an effective date here of, shall expire fifteen years from the effective date. For the abs- shelter advertising contract between the authority and a contractor, again. Who is the contractor, there's no, no mention of that. The agreement. Uh, does do advertising on the bu- bus shelters, uh, and is up to the advertising partner where those go and. Which shelters, there are about sixteen uh, advertising shelters in the city. Out of about. We're, we're still kind of getting information from all of the uh, locations, because Marta's not willing to share that file with us.
Oh, I have that file for something else, yeah, just remind me, and I'll give it to you. I'm sure I have it.
And. We asked about the source powered shelters, um, they said that on. They uh. Add shelters that the power is not generated enough to light them, um, so that they do not use them on. Uh, those advertising shelters, um, but they do do some on the non-advertising shelters, but they haven't done them. Very broadly, um. So they can talk about them, but. You all have asked them, or if you want us to ask them more firmly, we will. Uh, this is a big one, the city now becomes responsible for the trash pickup, uh, in the old agreement, the contractor was uh, in charge of trash picked up. It's um, just another dime in our budget, so um, if we have room for it, uh, we can do it, but um.
I don't think we have a choice, they can't get dumpy.
Well, they can take all all the trash cans away from.
Oh, that sounds like a really bad idea. Okay.
Yep.
Sorry.
Um, and the city had received, uh, approximately in two thousand and twenty one, we've received about. Uh, nine thousand three hundred and seventy six dollars, in two thousand and seventeen, we received seventeen thousand two hundred. And in two thousand and nineteen, we've received eleven thousand one hundred forty eight dollars, I think those numbers were depressed because we're in the middle of the pandemic. Because just today, uh, Richard and I sat down, uh, and we received about a hundred thousand dollars this year, um, from Marta, so.
Okay.
We think that's more along the lines of it.
Okay, that's all, okay. All right, I have questions, can I start with my questions, if that's okay? What happens if we say no to the ads, are they coming to take the shelters away?
That's a good question. Um, because they're a never governmental entity.
Uh huh.
We'd have to ask the attorney probably.
I I think that their location agreements essentially, they could come get them if they wanted to.
Yep.
Whether they will spend the money to do it, I doubt.
So I. I have long wanted to. Well, for four years since I was mayor, I have wanted to turn those into. Some part of our cultural arts program. I don't think we want the ads, I think that the ads don't add anything to our community, but we must have bus shelters, and in fact, we need to add bus shelters, which is why I think. I have the information you're looking for, because I worked with the art people on what we were gonna do moving forward, just haven't done it yet, so. Um. I think one question we need to find out is what happens if we just say no, I think Roswell. I think we need to look, but maybe Roswell got rid of the ads, um. We also don't have the shelters in some of the places we need them, like over by the Georgetown Kroger area where people actually ride the bus. Um. And. So I think. I think we need to figure out what happens if we remove the advertising, but I think we have some consensus around avoiding the advertising. Also, a fifteen year agreement is way too long for any one city council to approve. Um. So not only do we not want advertisements, but we don't want to approve it for fifteen years.
So with the, if we go with no advertising, our money will dry up from now.
Okay. Well, and to, we need to, we need sort of a historical perspective on what we've been getting from them. I think is maybe the way to start, but I just, I don't think. If we're concerned about how our city looks, I don't think we necessarily need to take revenue from the advertisers, I don't know how everybody else up here feels, but I'm seeing some nodding heads. Um, so I think the biggest question we leave here tonight with, first of all, we don't have to rush. They didn't rush, we, I mean, they're way behind, um, but also. We need to understand what the consequences are with this. The shelters. If they're really gonna come get them, they may not. Um. That's the first question I think we have, go ahead, Rob.
I'll just, I think echo a lot of what you said, I I would be interested in kind of just an estimate of. What it would cost to put trash cans on and and kind of maintain just litter control there. Assuming Marty Yanks that, just so we know, well, what cost to kind of keep these looking nice? But but to me, those are ideal locations for public art. And I keep glancing this way, because the one that's right over here is one that a number of citizens have complained to me about. Saying that the ads make it difficult to make a right turn, because it hides the traffic coming from the left, so being able to say. We don't want to do anything on that, cause it's a public safety issue, I I like to be able to have that control, so I I'm with Lynn, I think. If we can make the money work, so that we can take control, we can make them look like what we want.
Yep.
Them to look like, I think would be kind of a win-win for the city, but. Uh, you know, I think we seem to see some numbers and some estimates to help with that decision.
Right. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I am a big fan of public transportation, I'm a big fan of uh, bus shelters, I used one every day in high school, Chicago winters, it was lots of fun. Um. I also was the person that complained about this many years ago, when they changed a bus shelter near our house, right near Peachtree Middle School, put up advertising that I thought was inappropriate. That was basically targeting middle schoolers, um. I think we need to uh, echo what the mayor just said, that we need to step backwards. We don't need to approve this tonight, we don't need to approve this at all, um, if they want to pull shelters out. If uh, they have a reason to do that, let's look at putting in our own, I see there's a new shelter across the street from the Walmart, right there at the new development, right at the. Who put that in, do we know?
The developer put that in.
The developer put that in, so that's their own brand of.
Yeah, there was a Marta one there, but we had made them rework that area, so they put that in.
Okay, again, I'm good with doing nothing for now, right now, I believe most of the advertising that is there is in commercial areas more than business. If there's ones that we have problems with, I think we need to ask them to change them out.
What's the one at Brook Run right now, is there no advertising?
No, I advertised that one, it is lit, they they lowered the lighting standard, so it wasn't as bright, because it. Dark nighttime, it lit up, it was too bright, so they lowered the lighting down on that one, um. I want to be a good partner, more importantly, I want to be good to our citizens who ride the bus, and we do have a number of locations that really need shelters. If Marta decides to not be a good player, I say take, take them all out, and we'll find a way to replace them, or at least slowly replace the important ones and have a city. Program, maybe with our art community to put in something more appropriate and branded to our city, but again, I think shelters are important. But again, it's an advertising gimmick for them to try to get their money back for it, or money making scheme, and I don't want to be any part of that, and I don't really want their junk ads. Viewing our eyeballs and being forced on our throat every single day, thank you.
Uh, Tom.
Uh, yeah, basically gonna echo a lot of what's already been said, um. You know, in in essence, that advertisement is just billboards around the city, then we, you know how much we, we love billboards, so uh, I I would very much like to see those go, I think it's a. Outstanding opportunity to, for placemaking, for branding the city and differentiating, you could, you driving a Dunwoody know where you are, and I'll also echo what John said, I, these are necessary, these are. An important uh, thing for. Somebody to provide, um, and. I think if we had control that we could, we we can say where they went, we could determine where they needed to go, uh, there's a little risk there, bus routes changed, and we're in a hook for moving it, but but so what? I mean, that's, uh, you know, what I would like to do so that we can make an informed decision. Um, is, is know what the revenue is that we're receiving now, or have received, and what that would be in the future, because what we've received may not be what's this, what's to come in the in the future. Um, and then what it might cost. Um. For us to to put in our own, um, and what that might be, um, you know, I like, I love, I love the the public art idea, actually. Athens, Georgia, their bus stops for all uni- now. We're not Athens, some of the stuff is a little bit too funky for Dunwoody, probably, it might, it might not, but I thought it was really cool when you drive around Athens, and the bus stop, every bus stop's unique and different. And 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 opportunity for public art, I think probably for Dunwoody, we'd come up with something and have a consistency across the city.
Yeah.
Uh, but something that was a bit more decorative, but also uh, functional, but um, yeah, but I'd like to have all that information so that we we can make an informed decision. Um, with that and know what we're doing.
Catherine.
I think Marta, Marta's been interested in art, and I'm surprised that they're being so um, inflexible about this situation, I'm wondering if other cities, as Mayor mentioned, Roswell, if other cities. Are doing this differently, if Marta has a different contract with any other city, and they just want to put time into our contract, or if cities are just going away from. The Marta bus station, or stop to to their own.
I'm gonna call Roswell tomorrow.
Yeah, that that would be interesting, cause I don't. I don't like it either.
And I I think one of the, I had data at some point. And it still was probably a little bit in the pandemic, so it's not so accurate, but it's clear that we have some shelters that are used much more than others, but it's also clear that we have stops that need shelters. Much more than some of those places that they're shelters, and so we need to figure out, that's on, we can figure all that out too, when we have more control. And then with the revenue, if we could also go backwards, Richard, if we could look at like. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, cause we know that twenty to twenty two is probably skewed, but maybe look at some of those other years too, just to see if they were, oh, gave us more money, cause they owed us for something we didn't know. Okay. Thank you, go ahead, John.
One more thing for me, if we're going back to Marta for anything, I'd like to see a ridership survey, and what is their data on ridership and various places, for example, you know, in Georgia State. They have a number of riders at a certain time of day, and that that one route might get used a little bit. I want to know what the ridership is and where throughout the city.
And I might have some of that. And I might have some of that data, I'll send.
I'd love to have that data, just in case we have to do it ourselves. They should be providing that to us.
That's right.
If not to our police department as well.
Yeah, it is down from what it was prior to the pandemic, so.
It's two-year colleges are down, so that's also part of it. Anybody else? All right, so you just, y'all work on these ant questions and answers and stuff and bring it back. Or not. Now, well, no, I mean, we have to do something. We don't have to rush though.
Yeah, it'll be probably at least a month.
Yes, that's fine. Okay, Mr. Van Niki, as he's coming up here, I want to set the stage.
Good, because I was gonna have to do that. I'll let you do it.
So as I shared, I think at our last meeting about SPOST. Um, in late, in spring of twenty twenty-three, the mayors agreed to a July date by which if you were going to annex, your annexation had to be complete and approved, so those numbers could go into the SPOST calculations. I, Brookhaven, you know, owned up to their potential annexation. It wasn't a secret even then. And they said, we're fine with that. I looked around the room. I said, anybody else? Because we can't annex, just for the record, we are surrounded by cities. So I said, anybody else? No one said a word. Two weeks ago at a meeting, Shambly said, we're not sure we want a six-year SPOST because we're gonna grow a lot. And I said, huh. Um, I figured they met, they've approved a lot of housing, and I figured they meant internal growth. A few days later, it came out that they have an annexation planned. And um, that, that should be, the process should be, I don't know, like the steps, once you get everything. Your box is checked as a city, but the process should be complete. So what? By November, but we had said July. We have gone back and forth over the last few days, um, trying to reach a solution that the county would agree to. There's, there's none. Um, and that the city attorneys were comfortable with, there's not really one. Because it's about future revenues and that's not how this works. You're, you're voting on like current. And so today, Shambly notified us, so in DeKalb, it has to be unanimous for the intergovernmental agreement. One city can veto it. And so what that means is that Shambly has notified us today, and I don't think it's going to change, that they will not support a six-year SPOST. Under any circumstances. And so what that means for us, which is, what it means is that we will have a five-year SPOST. The only question outstanding is, is whether we will use the twenty twenty census numbers, which in that case, there will not have to be an intergovernmental agreement on this issue. Or if we're going to use the twenty twenty-three ESRI numbers, um, which there will need to be an intergovernmental agreement on. The other issue outstanding is, is the four smallest cities in DeKalb have asked to be rounded up to one percent. You know, they get like a half a percent. It would have to come out of the county's allocation only. Because if we took it out of the city's allocation as well, then it would push two more cities under one percent. It's a little confusing. That has not, there was another meeting about that today. I actually think it's not likely to happen. I think there's a lesson in not waiting until a week before something's due to make changes. And so I don't exactly know what numbers Jay has for us.
I'm trying to figure out which ones to pull up.
So I, I think that the goal of tonight's meeting ought to be the categories and the percent. And then we can, we can meet again. We'll have to have a special called meeting in all likelihood, but we will meet again. Hopefully, we will have. I'm pretty clear, like if I had to cast a vote today, I am very clear on the vote I would cast. I'm one of twelve. Um, many of whom are just getting their email with this development in it, because we thought we could sway Shambly. And so, and five years is fine. Five years is fine. And there's no growth model built into Jay's projection, so you just take a sixth of it off. You know, the, the last year, there'll have to be another vote in five years instead of six. That's all this means. And so anyway, the goal tonight ought to be to approve the categories and the percentages and don't particularly get hooked on the numbers.
I think that's.
And we're not approving, but to, to give consensus around the categories and uh, the percentage for those categories. And now you may have the stage.
That was a good setting of the discussion. And we talked beforehand, there's two trains that are running down. One is how the cities divvy up this. And that train is, is outside of the discussion of here. Dunwoody City Council should focus on what Dunwoody can control of this. So what we're gonna show is a presentation which kind of highlights from the last part of this. Uh, just some background, and this is a little bit more of SPOST one-on-one, just to start every discussion like this. The county is actually voting on its second SPOST. The first one was passed in November twenty seventeen. And unlike the previous host tax, which a little of that could be used for capital, this penny is a penny sales tax that can only be used for capital construction for cities and the county. You can't use it to run operations. You can't use it to pay staff. You can only build things with it. Now, we'll get into a little bit later about improvements that have been done in this, but the tax began in April of twenty eighteen and will expire in March of twenty twenty-four, hence why there's going to be a referendum in November countywide for approval of renewing the tax or extending it, or whichever verb we choose to use. Uh, city council had initial discussions on June twelfth, and based off of this, we worked out some options and also kind of noodled out some problems with some of them. So let's go back to the original budget that SPOST one had. SPOST one had three categories for the city of Dunwoody. And the council approved dollar figures. The council did not approve the percentages you see here. They're only here for reference. Now, what that does is if more money is earned, so more money will be earned above the forty-three million. You'll probably get into the forty-four, forty-five million. It can be used on any of the categories that were approved. Three broad categories: transportation, public safety and repair. Only fifteen percent in the original one could be used for repair. Uh, the city itself put in two point seven three percent of, a much lower figure than what was permissible. The lion's share of this went to transportation and public safety in SPOST one. So what does big boy SPOST do? It does just like everything else. It lets you build almost anything capital-wise. Repair things to extend the life of it. It opens it up just like the rest of Georgia County. So we're back to that. So any categories can be approved. Now, some of them, we're gonna take off, and we've taken off. I, I really sincerely doubt y'all are interested in building an airport. I don't think that's on the, on the thing. Also, for us, even though it is on there, some cities and some smaller cities use SPOST for stormwater and water and sewer. We don't run water and sewer, but right now, staff doesn't see a need since we have a stormwater utility, and it's also indexed for that to be used as thing here. You don't do voting equipment, you don't buy voting equipment, you don't have geo bond debt that you can retire from it. You also don't run a hospital unless you want to add one anytime soon. Okay, now let's look for options, and this is based off of council feedback from last time. The first column you see is SPOST one, okay? Now, option one is one staff couldn't recommend, but we want to put it out there for a kind of demarcation line for a discussion point. What if we took the same percentages with our current dollar figure, and I'm gonna leave the fifty-three million up there for a reference? If we go to five years, it lowers to the upper forties, and I've got that on another slide. So if we did the same percentages, the trouble with that is, we do understand there is parks and green space used for this. If it is not put on the ballot, then you could not use any of it for parks and green space for five years. So we would recommend at least putting a small portion of it. We also discussed at the last meeting, the possibility of working with the county on a mental health type facility. With the county not having that as, as committed funding, we noodled that out and said it wouldn't be good, because what if we did it, they didn't do it, then we would be stuck with a small amount of money. We would be obligated to spend on it, which brings us to option three. Option three takes the same percentage breakdown off the new dollar figure. Does transportation at about eighty-three percent, forty-four million, which covers your road resurfacing and major transportation object plans we've got going forward. Uh, police at about the same percentage. They primarily use that for vehicle replacement and large capital improvements. And moving part of repairs out, so it was at two points three, two point seven three percent. Moving it out so that parks has almost a million dollars in it, so that there is an amount so that the council can use that over the next five years for shortfalls wherever they may, may come. Or if more is collected above the final number, it can be used and allocated at that council's time. Now, that still leaves us with a little bit of repair. Brent and who's, his staff is handling the facilities and park repair money. We're right now comfortable with the amount we have in SPOST that's left over. And also the three million dollar repair fund that the council set up earlier this year. We think, we, we know for repairs, we are set up for major repairs for the next three or four years. So having some in there, yes, but not to the level we've had in the past is what we recommend. So we'd recommend something along the lines of option three. But I want to show you one slight change for this. And do, do, I hope I've got it. Uh, based upon the discussions that the cities and counties were going with earlier on today, and talking about going to a five-year SPOST, and I said upper forties, I should have said lower forties. See, under the bottom part of this, we've got two option threes. This is the six-year number versus the five-year number. So you're in six years, you go from forty-four million to thirty-seven million. So basically, you would lose a sixth of the funding. But you also lose a sixth of the time that you would be needing to spend it in. So programmatically, it doesn't change that much. It just means that a year earlier, we'd be doing it. So at this point, staff recommends something along the lines of option three, and this gets us to the next decision point. At some point, there will be a intra-intercity, whichever verb I should use. I don't know which word I should use, intra or inter. All the cities and the counties have to get together and either agree or agree to disagree on the percentage distribution. But our number will be somewhere between forty-five and fifty-three million for the life of the SPOST, depending if it's six-year or five-year. And us recommending these percentages at whichever level the county, or the county and the cities approve together. It allows the city to keep its transportation plan on the, and transportation and public safety on the same level it's been doing throughout SPOST one. Allows us to expand into parks, and since there is a geo bond vote also on the bonds for parks at the same time, they're kind of tied together. And then still leave enough for repairs, just in case we need to use it a later day. And with this point, I'll field questions.
Um, questions? I have one. So, so are you, it doesn't really matter, because it's not significantly different. For the five year, are you using the twenty-three number for all these?
I am currently, because we were doing this about thirty minutes before the council meeting, I'm using the twenty twenty-three.
All right, so with, and Michael Smith is gone, but maybe you'll get the answer before we meet again. So with the current increase in material labor costs for paving, does keeping transportation at the same percentage cover what we need to do to, I'd like to think that in the next five or six years, we'd finish the first round of paving.
Okay, uh, since repaving is not all of what we use with SPOST, we can make it work. A lot of what happens, and we're currently under the budget development during the month of August, is we start working with how much we earn, and we actually lowball the earnings so that we can fix as we goes forward. I would feel confident even in a high inflationary, because even if you did it, you would have to take from the other categories. We've got police equipment, which is going up just as much. In some cases, even on park stuff, repairs of equipment. So it's a high inflationary environment in all disciplines. So keeping it at about the same works for what we're doing with the capital plan.
And this is, these are five-year totals or six-year totals.
Uh, what you see on the screen is the bottom center is the six-year total, bottom.
So we're talking about outside of parks and public safety. We're talking about very small amounts of money on an annual basis. So this would be like replacing potentially a piece of equipment at a playground or the ground surface stuff, which would take off five years, actually.
And, and also don't lose the fact of you're losing a year of commitment to it. So it's
Right.
It's the same plan, basically.
No, 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 I understand, but my point is, is it neither parks or repairs are really significant amounts of money that you could do very much trans, I mean, repairs maybe, but anyway, okay. All right, Rob, go ahead.
And, and I think I've asked you this before, but I'm gonna ask it in kind of a different way. So repairs would be applicable to any city-owned facility, not just parks, correct?
Correct.
So, but we can't use that for energy efficiency retrofits and things like that.
Okay, and we, you, I like how you asked it a different way, because now my answer will be a little different.
Okay.
Um, we could, the thing, and here's the wonderful part about the SPOST repair category. It's in the eye of the beholder.
Okay.
And a lot of it is, did you extend the life of the asset? That's the question that Richard and I will ask each other.
I, I, I'm, I'm asking only because sustainability came up with a, a plan to try to do some of that. And so, to me, if we can identify some funding sources to make our buildings more energy efficient and cost less down the road, I definitely want to keep some money for that.
And I think the last time we did it, we did it with the, the windows and the like. If the windows are working and you replace them with better windows, then it's not SPOST, because you're not repairing it. But you're also building a different asset, so it depends upon the cost. We can work with something like that.
I, I, I would like, I mean, I, I don't know what the number could be. I don't know what our, our repair costs are, but I, I would love to figure out a way to thread in some of these improvements, especially if we can, you know, earmark it from a, a kind of a known source of revenue.
As we go forward, it can easily be part of the discussion the entire time.
Joe, sorry.
Um, a little bit dovetailing what the, the mayor was discussing regarding inflationary increase. Uh, is, 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 if you forecast inflation, are you forecasting the SPOST increase roughly the same? So therefore, is it a wash?
Uh, here, here is the best way to do it, and I'm still waiting on other cities to vet my own numbers, because for some reason, I'm now the projector of the county. It's basically the last twelve months collections, and here's one thing to note. The first SPOST did, or this SPOST also does not tax groceries and medicine. And we underestimated that. That's why numbers have come in higher over the past few years, plus high inflation right now.
And to be, just to clarify, we are still not taxing groceries and medicines. Okay, and this new, this new SPOST also does not tax.
Okay, so in projecting for forward, I highly recommend and have recommended all the cities, I'm fine with them challenging it. Is it's the last twelve months with zero percent inflation over five years. And the reason being, even in a high inflationary environment, we've had two and three quarters years of it right now. It can't go on for incredibly long without coming back down to a normal two to three percent increase. Uh, even though Jay Powell and I disagree on a lot, there will be a landing.
And I'll just, uh, make a, a forward-looking statement, like the financial planners do. Um, I look forward to combining this with our CIP and really matching it up with projects for that. We have a five-year CIP, the five-year SPOST would, would fit in nicely. So I'm looking forward to having that conversation. We have the budget committee coming up shortly.
And since we are doing the projections, they kind of get the numbers the second I'm done with them, so we'll incorporate it.
John.
So Jay, explain to me again on the zero. If we have a zero percentage, we put forward a zero, if there's excess revenue that comes in, that zero means that we don't have the opportunity to put any money towards that in the future? Or do we have the ability then to, uh, fund something over and above at that point?
Uh, you would, okay, uh, I left it on here just to keep the charts looking the same is the reason it's in there. Um, if it is not listed as a category, it is not an eligible expense. The city should put a dollar figure with everything. Now, you could put technically a dollar. There is a little bit of perception with that. Um, the one thing is, if you put the money in there, and that's the reason on option two at the top. If that was approved by council, the council would have to spend at minimum nine hundred thousand on that type of facility. And if there is no place to do it, very seldom do you ever get into it, but there's rules about SPOST with if you don't build a project.
I guess I'm just looking at it from the very, various perspectives, parks being one, we have a possible bond referendum that's for parks. Now, this is another tax that's for parks. Are we watering down or doing too much for parks? If we were to zero this out and there was excess funds, could we put money towards parks? Later, I'm just trying to figure out the view of this.
In, in essence, no, and let's just, uh, go with the, just for simplicity sake, the six-year option at the bottom. If we went with that and we moved parks down to a quarter million, we would be committed to a quarter million. You would then have to add to the other categories, because it was so, so you would either add to public safety, you would add to pu- uh, transportation, or you would add to repairs, and then you would be committing that to them. So it's like any other budgetary process, it's making a decision, and get, this would be over five or six years, so it's spread actually pretty thin in those categories.
I guess my thinking is that these are the minimums that we would have to do per dollar-wise, or is it right, dollar-wise? And then if revenues come in higher, we have the opportunity to spread the revenue in various ways, correct?
Correct.
And if we have a zero in one of the categories, are we able to fund that or no?
You, you would be ineligible.
Ineligible, so that's a reason to have parks listed now, so that we could then fund any excess to where we would want to. Ineligible. So that's a reason to have parks listed now so that we could then fund any excess to where we would want to.
Correct.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand the ins and outs of your.
Fair point.
For parks, can it be used for maintenance too or no?
Uh, we get back into the repair.
So like if your monkey bars break and you have to replace your monkey bars.
They'd have to be very big monkey bars, but.
Well, no, but you don't have to spend it all on the monkey bars, but is that an eligible expense?
Yeah, it basically, anything that's ten grand worth of a repair, yes.
Oh, so there's a minimum.
Yeah, in, in general, a capital asset is ten grand or more.
Gotcha. Okay.
So.
Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, so I'm very much in favor of adding, adding the parks in there. Um, I understand it's by adding parks, you're not getting extra money. It's you, you're kind of robbing Peter to pay Paul, right? You have to take it from, out of somewhere. And it looks like we just took it all out of, out of repairs. We didn't touch uh, public works. We didn't touch public safety. Um, and I guess my question, I, I know you, you, you talked to this, um, that you feel confident because we've reduced the repairs number quite substantially. You're confident that there's enough to handle the needs of the city even moving forward?
Correct. If there is one thing, and this is an honest review, we reviewed all of Splosh one spending, which we presented last time. The one that we are underspending as far as a time continuum is repairs. Part of that had to do with the way it was set up originally by predecessors of ours, that the, the way it was set up was not exactly the best. So between Brent staff and myself, we weren't all kind of focused on it. We are focused on it now. And so we're looking at how to start pushing that cash faster. Even with that said, the council has now set up what we intend as staff to keep perpetuating is a perpetual repair and improvement fund. And I want to use that term very specific for improvement because when it's general tax dollars, the rules are a little bit looser on that. Keep, that is the main source for repairs and maintenance for that. That way, when we get into gray areas, we're safer. And then still keep some within Splosh for easy ones. And I'll give you one that Brent and I are talking about all the time. Is the day the library parking lot gets re, that, that's an easy Splosh one. It's big, one thing. Um, to use it for items like that as we go forward, so that the Splosh one is very specific for bigger items as we come along. And the other one isn't, to give you the one we're working on right now. We've had some of the chairs in this building for fifteen years and it's unglamorous. But when you replace a bunch of chairs, you get up to twenty-five grand pretty quickly. And so looking at that, that becomes a general fund repair because that's big. But we don't want to cloud Splosh with it and have the discussion.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure that our repairs are, are adequately covered because we, we've done a great job. I think in providing first-class amenities for residents, we want to make sure we maintain them in that order. And I want to make sure we can do that. Because to the mayor's point, you break down the amount of money that's there. It's uh, for parks, it's only a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a year. And for maintenance, it's only eighty-nine thousand dollars a year roughly. So it's not a lot of money we're talking about.
Correct. And I'll even give you on the, uh, the part of our internal discussions and developing the budget. I mean, it's literally developing this month. This is the month before it's due. Um, we're looking at always making sure the general fair, general repair fund is at five or six hundred thousand dollars a year throughout the entire C I P. So that we will always have that as something to lean against, along with a little bit of Splosh if we.
Okay. And I think the parks is great, it's things like the shade structures. That's some, that would be the perfect type of thing that could be funded with, with the stuff and money. Okay, thank you.
Can we pay for bus shelters with Splosh money?
How much you lost? How much is a bus shelter worth?
Public safety, transfer, transportation, right?
Public safety.
Yeah, oh, okay, yeah, ask me stuff on the fly like it's a game show.
Okay, it's not. Well, I just, I'm, you know, I've been immersed in Splosh. I just came from, that was just from the hip.
I am actually going to say, just based upon the fact that there are wheels associated with it, we can make it work.
Okay, that was just a question. Um, so as we move forward in the next few days and get things straight, I guess I want to make sure y'all double check that the parks and the maintenance numbers don't need to be tweaked. Um, I'm presuming that like if Brook Run needs a, um, the grounds covering replaced, that that could come out, what do you, not the, the playground, the spongy stuff, the foam, which I don't think is as expen, inexpensive as it seems, or in the future, the shade structures.
What?
That, that's the kind of thing that could come out of either parks or maintenance.
Yep.
Not the shade structures because those would be new, but the spongy stuff would be either or.
Well, the shade structures actually could be part of parks. It's a.
Right, no, I know for parks, but for maintenance, the spongy thing is a better example.
Always think of the repair thing as it's going to cost ten grand and it's going to be brand new when it's done.
Spongy stuff is brand new. I mean, it would, would be replaced. Okay. All right. So we will just have to keep y'all up to date on, so wait. What I need to know is just, is there some consensus around these breakdowns? Does anybody want to change the percentages? Well, it's option three. No, we're not worried about the, we're not worried about the dollar amount right now. Yes, or you, you may actually have to give, we may have to give me authority to, anyway. Um, does anybody want any changes in the percentages? That's coming soon. I heard that CEO said he signed the AMR deal. So we'll see. We haven't gotten it back yet, have we, Eric? No, okay. Um. Okay, not, okay. Um, all right.
We, staff will go ahead and prepare documents with alternate versions based upon final dollar figures because they're in flux this week.
Right.
We'll prepare versions of resolutions for y'all to do that are roughly this percentage distribution amongst those four categories.
Right.
Uh, we will have to, and y'all, most of y'all have responded back when you are available. We may have to, uh, you'll have to indulge us that we will have to find time either early in the morning, late in the day, whenever, just have a very quick meeting for adoption for it.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Sorry for the confusion. All right, public comments. I have one card. If anyone else wants to speak, the cards are in the back. Nathan Sparks, she'll have three minutes. Introduce yourself.
Um, Mayor and Council, thanks again. Nathan Sparks, uh, forty-six fourteen Kingsdown Court, and did that last time. Uh, with respect to the shade canopies, I can appreciate why today those would be really nice to have. Um, I was at the Candita Building this morning, the living building at Georgia Tech, giving, helping some folks tour that. They provide shade canopy, canopies there as well. Solar panel on top of those shades canopy. So it's providing a dual purpose. But I would submit to you that there's a better shade canopy that we could put near the ball fields, trees. There is a path, our Dunwoody path, right there across the street from the ball fields. And I was just looking at Google Earth or map or whatever. And I don't see any trees on the southern exposure of that trail. And if there were trees there, they'd be shady, deciduous trees, shady in the summer, but then provide sunlight and warmth in the cool uh, periods of time. So let's think about whether we want to invest a hundred grand with shares, shared the funding with the um, the baseball team. But I mean, fifty thousand dollars for shade canopies when we're going to be planting trees in Brook Run every year? I think we can spend our money wi, more life wisely. So, thank you. But I appreciate everything you guys do. Great meeting tonight. And I appreciate you guys, uh, listening to our comments as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, that concludes public comment for this meeting. Now, uh, city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor, we do need an executive session for personnel.
Okay, thank you. Um, council comments, anybody? Catherine.
Happy birthday, Councilman Rob Price.
Yes, um. Yes, that's fine.
I, I just want to add on to, I mentioned earlier, we had a couple of folks from the sustainability committee, um, in here. To me, they have very reasonable and well-thought-out recommendations. And I know Eric, you and Richard have kind of been talking internally. So, you know, hopefully maybe at a future meeting, we can have some, some ideas on how some of this might be incorporated.
Um, I want to thank Parks for two events in a row, movie night. They've had several events, um, movie night and then a kind of rainy concert, which was a shame because the music was fantastic, but it really rained. Um, and we look forward to having that band again, but everybody's hard work is appreciated. It takes them hours to get ready. Look for our September concert to be the second Saturday in September and, um, and they're always a lot of fun. I encourage you to come. Uh, and I think that's all. All right. So I need a motion for executive session for reasons of personnel.
Move to exit to executive session for reasons of personnel.
Second.
Move to Jay.
Second.
Well, in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned.